Call the regular meeting of the city council, town of Atherton, July 21st, 2021. Order at 6:00 PM. Anthony, can, oh, we should do the role, the Pledge of Allegiance first?
Certainly.
Everybody, we're going to do Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. To the republic which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, one nation. For God. And the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's a little hard not having the flag image somewhere, but you know, we know.
All right, I didn't, yeah, I didn't.
We know it's in our hearts. Okay, so roll call, please. I, Anthony.
Councilmember Hawkins.
I.
DeGolia.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Lempers.
Here.
And Mayor Lewis.
Here.
And we'll just note for the record that Councilmember Widmer, he told us in advance that he'd likely not be at today's meeting.
And we wish him all the best. So presentations, we have no presentations this evening. So we'll go on to item number four, public comments. And Anthony, you can instruct the public on how they may be able to make comments because I do think we do have someone who wants to make a comment.
Certainly. So for all the folks joining the line, it looks like we're all here via Zoom link. You'd like to make a public comment, you can use the participants button at the bottom of your screen and raise your hand. You can also send a message directly to me in the chat. And if you happen to dial in by the phone, you can dial star nine in your receiver to raise your hand and you'll be recognized by myself or the mayor to make a public comment. I also want to note that we have a three minute time limit. We don't run a clock for you, but I'll just try to give you a reminder when you're getting close to it. And at this time, if anybody would like to make a public comment, this is your opportunity. This would be for something that's not on the agenda.
Okay. Is there any member of the public who wish to make a public comment at this time? Please unmute yourself and speak up.
I don't see anything just yet.
Alex Kay is here. Good. Michael Greenlee, Philip Conlon. No. All right. Going once, going twice, going three times. Okay, we will then go on to item number five, which is the city manager's report. George?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You have the written report as part of your agenda packet. Staffs here to answer any questions on their detailed departmental reports. During my one-on-one meetings with council, I did not have any significant issues raised.
Okay, any member of the council have a comment or question on this? Mike, Vice Mayor?
Just a, George, what's the deal with RIMS, with the RIMS reporting? Is that a short-term issue or what is it?
In the police department's report?
Yes.
Looking for the chief on the line here. He knows more about it than I do. I know that they were having some technology issues. And so sometimes it worked, sometimes it didn't. But last I checked, which was earlier this week, it was functioning. It's just.
The report had basically no data in a number of categories.
Yeah, there was a citizen RIMS, the online database of the mapping part of that, that the public can access. That's where they get that information. It was having some technical glitches, so that might be what the cause of it is. It's, it should be fixed. I can look at it now if you like.
Okay, no, if it's, if it's fixed, it's fixed. That's good.
So would that report be, when it's fixed, be generated and put on our website?
It's, that's all on the website now, as part of Citizen RIMS reporting.
Okay, so for anyone in the public.
No.
To know, to answer Vice Mayor's query about not having the report in this agenda packet through city manager, it seems like we do have that on our website. So if you're interested, it's ci.atherton.ca.us and you can access it there.
Yeah, and as you can see on the share screen there, it's functioning again. So you go through these items and look at the detail of them.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I finally got hooked up. Greg Conlon.
All right. I'm, you look like you were there, but so let's just finish the city manager's written report item, and then I will go back and give you an opportunity to make your public comment because I know that you wanted to do that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from any other member of the council on the city manager's written report? Any member of the public have a comment or a question? If not, we will rewind and go back to our public comment section and give our resident Phil, Greg Conlon, the opportunity to make his comment. Greg?
Yes, I just want to follow up on my discussions at the last meeting at the study group about Walsh Road and the need for burying the wires because of the danger of fire on that street. And it's interesting, this week in the Chronicle, yesterday or the day before, in the right-hand column on the front page, there was a major fire that occurred because merely because a tree limb fell down, hit the wires, and, and I wasn't clear whether it hit the transformer or not, but it started a fire, a major fire this week. So I, it's just a, an antidote of, of what the possibilities of what could happen. And I think Walsh Road, as the city manager concluded, is probably the most dangerous situation in Atherton. So I would encourage you to, to look at the, the best way to deal with that. And I'm not sure, George is more knowledgeable than I am on how to do it, but I'd be glad to help in any way I can to get it started. So I think that's, that's something. George, you have anything to add?
No, public comment. Go ahead, George.
I do not. Sorry. Yeah, Madam Mayor, that's correct. Public comment.
Yeah, so Greg, we will, you've made your public comment and council hears this and we'll go back and talk with city manager more about how to bring it forward. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Good. So then we'll jump on down to our consent calendar agenda item. It's items number six through 10. And just to refresh everybody's memory, consent calendar items are routine in nature and are generally considered in one motion and adopted in a single vote by council. If there's discussion regarding a consent calendar item, then the members of the city council, the public and/or staff wishing to pull the item should so indicate at this time. And do I have any member of the council wanting to pull any item on the consent calendar for question or discussion? Seeing none, I'll take it out to the public. Any member of the public have a item? I'd like to ask city manager.
Just item number seven, Madam Mayor, the minutes we need to remove from the consent agenda.
Good, yes.
From the agenda entirely, actually, yes.
They will be coming, forthcoming later. Okay. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Items number six through 10, with the exception of item seven, approval of the minutes, which are not part of this packet at this time.
So move.
Motion, Vice Mayor, and second by Councilmember DeGolia? Any questions? All in favor?
I think we have to do a roll call. Yeah.
Always, you know? I'm trying to move it along, Mike.
I appreciate that.
God bless you for that, Elizabeth.
Councilmember Hawkins.
I.
Councilmember DeGolia.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Lempers.
Hi.
And Mayor Lewis.
Hi, okay, thank you. Moving on to item number 11, under the regular agenda, which is the certification of the continuing emergency and ratification of such rules and regulations enacted by the Director of Emergency Services in response to COVID-19. May, Council, City Manager, Broderick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This item's on the agenda for two reasons. One is the continuing certification of the ongoing emergency due to COVID-19. At your last council meeting, your direction was that this continue until the state's declaration of emergency is lifted. But because there were a couple of other items for discussion, I brought, I returned it to this agenda during the regular agenda for comment or, or approval. But the primary purpose of it is to provide some direction regarding a return to in-person meetings, face coverings and vaccination requirements. It was noted during my one-on-one conversations about the continuing emergency under COVID. And the current declaration expires concurrent with the state's declaration. There were some concerns raised as to the special duties and authorities that are actually granted to the emergency services manager, which is the city manager. While the town's continuation of the local emergency declaration is primarily related to receiving reimbursement from the state or federal government, FEMA guidelines and such for any expenditures due to the emergency, it does provide some emergency duties and authorities to the city manager. These include the ability to immediately address emergent issues related to the emergency, such as ceasing activities at the park, stopping a particular construction project due to a COVID outbreak, shutting downtown facilities or resources due to a COVID outbreak, addressing HR issues related to face coverings and vaccinations and other COVID-related issues, to include the requisition of an installation of materials and supplies to address any of those issues. Absent that declaration of emergency, some of those things would need council approval before I could do them, depending on cost and such. So that's why that's going on. But there's also a component of that related to vaccinations and face coverings and in-person meetings that I wanted to get some feedback from the council on this evening.
Okay, thank you. So we'll bring it to the council members first for any comments on this item. And we'll have a discussion about the return to person, in-person meetings, and then the requirements of vaccinations. Vice Mayor? You have to unmute.
Apologies for that. Before we get into specifics of that, I, I, I think I'm the person who raised the issues George talked about in terms of, of the powers that we're granting here. It, it makes me uncomfortable that we've been operating under an emergency situation for, I don't know, what is it, maybe 18 months or so now. And I understand the reasons for it, and I think it's probably the right decision. But I would, I guess, urge the city manager, maybe we can do something in terms of, of insisting on it, to come to the council for ratification of the actions he's taking. And, and I say that just because we set up this whole process of representative democracy in our town, where you're supposed to be able to hold the council accountable. And now for 18 months, we had, we've been delegating every, not everything, several things to city manager, who's not directly accountable to the voters. So I'm, I'm trying to look to make that link, and I'd like that they have as much brought to us as possible, even if it's ratification after the fact.
So I guess I just ask, are there specific areas that you would like to have council address at this time?
George or me?
You.
No, I see all the things, and, and this is more theoretical than, than specific. But what, what George mentioned was that there are certain, he's able to take certain actions now that normally you have to go to the council for, for permission, but because there's an emergency, we need to get them done quickly. He's taken those actions without coming to the council. I believe those actions, I'd like to have them come back to the council after the fact for ratification. Or even just a description, give us a chance to discuss in public or, or see them in public.
So I see Councilmember DeGoya, he wants to make a comment on this.
I mean, I, I think it's a, that this is a very well-taken comment. I mean, basically, Mike started by saying he felt uncomfortable with being in the midst of this continuing emergency, which we re-declare every month. And I, I think that's healthy, that we feel uncomfortable with it. I mean, we, we are a democracy and, and this emergency does delegate from the council to our city manager to take actions, which we would otherwise be taking. I'm not sure that there frankly is very much, you know, that's been done that we haven't talked about, and we did set up a subcommittee to review, in particular, the parks, since that's the venue in which we have the greatest exposure and engagement with the public, given that the town center is under construction. But I think it's very healthy to feel uncomfortable with it. I, I completely agree with it. I, I think that we're at the end of this experience. And, you know, when, when, in private companies, when a board sometimes has to take action in between board meetings, or when, when an executive does those actions are, when, when the action is properly managed, ratified by the board. And, and I think that's what Mike is saying. I think that, I think that's a healthy perspective. So I support it.
Okay. Any other member, Diana, do you have a comment?
I don't really have a comment. The list of things that George listed seem to be things that I'm comfortable with letting him manage during an emergency. It, it's not like he's, it's urgent things or, I don't know, I, I get, I, I appreciate the sentiment, but the actual items on the list, I don't think, I, I feel that has to go in front of all of us.
I think what, what Vice Mayor is saying is that we're going to ratify them after the effect, because otherwise we would be holding special meetings, you know, two or three times a week. And I don't think any of our council members are ready to be called upon to have a special council meeting to hear and vet and approve those actions in a timely manner, you know, in such a way that, you, you know, you got a COVID outbreak at a construction site and the city manager says, shut it down right now. You know, I don't want any more spreading. Now, to convene a special meeting of the council to, you know, discuss that, hear the facts, and then rule on it is cumbersome. That's why the, I think the emergency order is there. But what I hear Vice Mayor saying is that he's comfortable if we bring it back to council in a meeting where we essentially ratify the decisions that have been made. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So would we do that in this meeting, or does it have to be an agendized? I mean, it's sort of an agendized thing, a city manager's going to opine.
Yes, so at your last meeting, if you recall, we extended this so we didn't have to bring it back every month until the state removed their emergency declaration. I think what the vice mayor is saying is I'll continue to bring it back every month as a recertification. And, and if there is any action that I've taken within that last 30 days or less, you will need to ratify it as part of that action item that's on your agenda. But it's only if I've taken action. As this winds down, there's, there's less and less stuff going on, so.
Well, hopefully, yes. Oh, definitely, hopefully. Okay. So I feel comfortable in having our procedures be that way. And hopefully, we're with August going dark, and will we call a special meeting if there are actions?
If, if there are actions, at, at this point, the, the only items that I'm seeking council feedback this evening on relate to the return to in-person meetings, which we've tentatively scheduled for September. The, the Brown Act relaxation components, they expire on September 30th. So the council could furlough that return to in-person meetings until October, if that's a more comfortable time to do that. And then also, there was a request to have a conversation around vaccinations and potentially face covering requirements.
Well, let, can we take the first one about the in-person meetings and whether or not we're, we feel comfortable starting in the September meetings? We have a study session, which I think is like September 1st.
Yes.
Right? And then the other one is early, you know, three weeks later. So, two weeks later. Yeah, so that's very early. And so Rick, I know what I feel, personally feel, but Rick?
So I think that because the town center is still in process of construction, and my understanding is that the state has waived the Brown Act requirements for council member attendance and compliance with the posting requirements, that that is waived until October 1st. I would strongly prefer that we not attempt to meet in person until the council chamber, the new council chambers are opened. So I don't think that will happen by September 1st. Maybe that would mean we could have our September council meeting in the council chambers. I'm very comfortable to remain on, on Zoom until we're frankly required to go back, but I think that would be October 1st.
Okay, Diana, would you like to opine?
I would also say October 1st.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, that's where I am. I think in particular, in the event somebody was, was ill or on travel, it'd be nice to have that flexibility.
Yeah.
And, and, and I'd just add to that, there, there's a, there's a debate that's going on, on many boards. Because the Brown Act rules, if, if you are local, require you to post. If, for example, if you are in your house, as all of us currently are, they require you to post at your house and allow any member of the public to come into your house to attend the meeting, which I don't think is safe. And while I would certainly welcome any of my neighbors in, it could be anybody that can walk in because the public is invited to our meetings. And particularly, I mean, Atherton's not the greatest risk community, certainly. But there are communities where people are very, very hesitant to go down that route, and there's a big debate because of the value of having hybrid meetings going forward. So we'll just have to see where that goes. But I think, given the current rules, deciding to hold off till October 1st is smart.
Okay, so I agree with all of you, and I think that we need to take this one step at a time and not discuss whether or not we're going to have hybrid meetings going forward. But let's just say that we'll target returning to in-person meetings as of the October meetings. Okay, otherwise, if we're traveling or otherwise out of town, then we have to post where we are and notify the public in our agendas in time so that we can call in, just like we've done before this. It makes it a lot more cumbersome. But so many, so many people would rather have call-in, you know, hybrid meetings. And I know on some of the regional boards, they're really, really wanting to do that more than the local boards necessarily. Okay, is that enough direction, city manager?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Mayor? Do you need to take public comment? I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. Oh, yes. Hello, public. So given the discussion with the council and the topic of the in-person meetings and delaying it until the October meetings, do you have any comments on that? Raise your hand or unmute and start talking.
And I, I don't see anyone indicating that they have a comment, Mayor.
Okay, Anthony, yeah, you got that guy. Yeah, okay, good. All right. Given that, we'll move on to the topic of vaccinations. And face coverings, so.
I can speed this up if you'd like, Madam Mayor.
Sure, yes.
So with respect to face coverings, there's an ongoing debate, various counties throughout the state. LA County, as you probably heard, returned to a mandate for face covering, whether you were vaccinated or unvaccinated. The Bay Area counties have made it a recommendation, but at this point, it is not a mandate. And they're doing that in response to the Delta variant moving around and, and increasing in numbers with the, in the unvaccinated population. So that's, that's that topic. Currently, we require face coverings at city hall only if you are not vaccinated. Then the other issue is the vaccination itself. And the current state of the law, and the city attorney can opine much further, is kind of in flux with that. We could require or mandate vaccinations amongst our staff, many of which you know have public contact. And then there are certain exemptions or exceptions that they could state. And once those are validated, the reasonable accommodation for that is a face covering. And so we require a face covering anyway. So we're kind of sidestepping the legal issue there and just going straight to what the reasonable accommodation would be. At this time, there's probably about four to six individuals who are in and out of a couple of different departments. Most of them are in the PD that are either not vaccinated or declined to state. So they are required to wear a face covering at any time when they're at work. So those are the two issues. The face covering one's kind of a, just getting council feedback. On the vaccination one, it was a specific request by a member of the council to have the conversation.
Thank you, George. Any member of the council, Vice Mayor?
I just have a question, Mr. City Manager. You talk about employees, how about contractors?
That, that as well. They are required to do the same.
They, they treat it exactly the same as employees? Okay.
Yes.
You mean like our, our contractors, not the construction contractors that are hired on?
Right, I mean, town.
Town contractors.
Town contractors.
MCE and Inner West, people like that. Any other member of the council want to make a comment on that? Rick?
So I think that there is a very significant, I, I don't know how best to characterize it, social issue regarding this pandemic, which is, it's very clear that transmission of the virus is greatly reduced when large numbers of people are vaccinated. So I feel like there's almost a moral position that it's important to support and encourage people to be vaccinated in our families, with our friends. You know, there, there are lots of people that have had some hesitancy about it, but it's been proven to be safe. And there are certainly some things that you can't do unless you're vaccinated. My, my gut sort of emotional and moral perspective is that this is a good thing to do. And it would be a good thing to require our staff to be vaccinated. Of course, I understand that there's exceptions that people can take for religious or, or health, or, or, you know, certain valid, very valid reasons that are legal reasons why somebody wouldn't want to get vaccinated for one reason or another, and, and I don't have a problem with that. But in general, I think it's something that is socially good to support. I don't want to put a, you know, the town in a difficult position. I, it's, it's, it's generally, I, I think it's more of a moral and social perspective. But it is something that I do believe.
Diana?
I feel the same way Rick does on this, and I'm wondering if there's an approach we could take where we, if, if an employee or a vendor wants to not wear a mask, they provide their vaccine card. And by providing the vaccine card, then they're allowed to not wear a mask, as opposed to making everyone wear a mask. And then, could we take that approach legally or otherwise?
So I, I don't think we are requiring all of our employees to wear a mask, even if they're vaccinated. We're only requiring those who are unvaccinated and come to work to wear a mask. And so.
No, how do we know that they're vaccinated?
Well, we're not requiring people to show their vaccinated card, are we, George?
No, they just have to advise whether they are or are not vaccinated, and if they are not, they are required to wear a face covering.
Yeah, yeah. So Cal OSHA provides employers three options for determining vaccination and therefore the requirement not to wear a mask in the workplace. One is proof of the vaccination card. Showing it, two is a self attestation, saying that I received it. And then the, the third is the actual copy of the vaccination card. And many public agencies are going with the self attestation for both members of the public as well as employees.
However, yeah, I went to the Music at Menlo concert a week ago, their opening. And before, before, they, they sent emails out and they said, take a picture of your vaccination card and scan it and send it to us at this email address, covid safety@musicatmenlo.com before you show up. And of course, I did, and my friend did too, but when we got there, her name wasn't on the database yet, and so she had to show the, her card before we got in. And so, and then they made us wear masks, everybody wear masks. I mean, there are, there are certain venues, and Menlo School is very, very, you know, nervous about it. I mean, there are, there are certain venues, and Menlo School is very, very, you know, nervous about it all because they don't want any virus around potentially their children. I have a friend in the Washington DC area who said that she was vaccinated and she got COVID, like the Delta variant, even though she was vaccinated because of people not, you know, because of how contagious that is. And so just because we're vaccinated doesn't mean that we're completely, I mean, it's not 100%. It's like, I don't know, 97, 99%. I feel, I feel really good about it, but I certainly don't want to be in and around close in, close in quarters with a lot of people who potentially are not vaccinated. So I think that what the town is doing is reasonable at this time. And we are a small organization. So I do agree that it's a moral obligation. If you can be vaccinated, you should be vaccinated, no matter what your other opinions are about it. So Diane?
I think I'd like to see us even make an announcement to people to let people know that we have taken the step that we're all vaccinated. And just make it public, even have a sign on the door. Is, the question I actually wanted to ask was, right now, doesn't the state require you to have a mask if you're indoor?
Right now, they're, they're recommending. If you go into a store, like a grocery store, you're supposed to be wearing masks.
Unvaccinated.
No.
Yeah, no, there's no requirement that you wear. Each business or entity can choose to take a stronger position than the state. The state position, as I understand it, is if you're unvaccinated, you're required to wear a mask. If you're vaccinated, you're not required to wear a mask. But organizations like Music at Menlo requires everyone, whether you're vaccinated or not, to wear a mask. And I believe they, they only allow people into their venue who are vaccinated.
Right.
So.
That's correct, with the caveat that there are a list of enumerated businesses that mandate it. So if you are riding public transportation, if you're in a hospital, if you're in school. But absent those, it is the business's prerogative.
So.
Are we still getting the monthly reports? I'm not getting them anymore. There were reports where they were giving all the statistics and talking about all the, you know, almost weekly changes in the regulation, and I'm not getting those anymore. Are those still coming to you, George?
County's not holding those weekly meetings anymore.
That's correct. They still, they still update their website with the data, and that's available on the county's website. But they're not hosting the weekly meetings any longer.
It's not being pushed to us. It's our responsibility to go to the county's COVID hotline site or whatever. Okay, so any other comments from council members? Open it up to members of the public. What do you think about all of this? What do you think that we should be doing? Anthony, I think Susan Knox needs to be unmuted. I don't know, I see, I see her, it says ask to unmute on her thing.
Well, that's, that's a hover thing with your mouse. Right. Just for anybody joining from the public, if you're joining by Zoom link, you can use the participants button at the bottom to raise your hand. If you're joining by phone, you can dial star nine. I don't know if anybody has a comment that they'd like to make on the item, if you would like to, now is a good time.
Okay.
While we're waiting, if I could, I'm, I'm a little confused. Did we end up with any decision? We, we had some discussion, but did we get, did we decide anything?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Well, the discussion for the requirements for vaccination and face coverings, right?
Yeah.
What's your opinion, Vice Mayor?
I, I mean, I, I think it's, there's no question but that we should be in favor of people getting vaccinated. And that should be a statement of policy. To me, the only issue is whether we require it and how we require it. In my conversations with the city manager, I asked whether there's any way that if somebody declined to state or was not vaccinated, that we could keep them from the public, because, you know, that'd be kind of an accommodation. And the answer apparently was no. I heard that correctly.
It depends on the role. The, the, I, I don't want to betray the particular individuals at a public meeting. But they're, they're easily identifiable wearing a mask anyway. But if they are, for example, a police officer, there's no desk job for a police officer.
Yes, I didn't, I was hoping to find a solution. I don't think there's a solution there. So I, I think, I, I think that generally, we're in the right place now. But I'd be more than happy to do, if it'd be a good idea, to do some kind of public statement that we think it's a good idea and we encourage our employees and, and all residents to get vaccinated, or however you want to phrase it.
I agree, and I think that that's the consensus with the other members of council, Rick and Diana, and I think myself for sure. And if we can kind of come out as a town and the council's policy is that we highly encourage every member of our community to be vaccinated. You know, if you can, you know, and through no other reason of health reasons or something like that. Just to try to protect our community. And our, frankly, there are, I know in our little office at our town, most everybody wears masks anyway, even if they are vaccinated. That's, that's my impression. I mean, when I go in there, everyone wears a mask, everyone's masking. And I know that at my company, when we have everybody come in, we're doing it very slowly. There's one day that we kind of stagger everybody coming in, and we're, they're all wearing masks inside the, the large office space. It's just, so nobody's singled out. But it, it's a voluntary thing. It's not mandated, but it's just how it has evolved.
Mayor, it looks like we do have one person indicating they'd like to make a public comment, if you're open to taking that.
Sure, Stacy Miles-Holland. Hi, welcome. Yes, there you go.
Hi, I just wanted to chime in that there have been a number of studies released this week that workplace mask mandates are one of the most effective tools we have in reaching herd immunity. So I would highly encourage having an actual mandate to, it's just more of a public perception thing that when local governments do that, it helps make people feel more comfortable with getting vaccinated.
So you're recommending that we ask all of our employees whether or not they are vaccinated fully or unvaccinated to continue to wear masks if they are inside the office doing their work?
Well, I, I think that's the, that's what, I, I mean, George, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that's exactly what we do right now. We, we ask employees whether they're vaccinated and, and if they aren't, or they decline to state, they're obligated to wear a mask.
That's correct.
Right.
And I, I think the issue is whether we would want to, at one end, make a rule that we want our, you know, that we want our employees to be vaccinated, unless they're, unless they satisfy one of the legal exceptions. And, or, or to me, that is a strong position to take. A less strong position to take is to announce that we strongly favor being vaccinated. We encourage everyone in the community to be vaccinated. And we strongly encourage all of our employees to be vaccinated, but we don't require it.
Yeah, I think.
To me, that's the option.
Yeah, I think the encouragement is absolutely fine. I don't know that we can, we want to go that we are requiring everybody at this time. Is that true? That we're not going to require everyone?
That, that is presently where we are.
Right. Diana?
Are we legally liable if someone walks into our office and catches, someone comes into the post office and someone catches it from someone behind our counter that we employ? That's my first question, and maybe Mona knows that. And the second is clearly, this is going to be an issue that's going to be litigated. There's no two ways that this issue of whether we, because it already just went through on the university level. And the judges said that at the university, universities can require kids to have vaccinations. So that was in the newspaper just yesterday. So clearly, this kind of thing for cities and city officials, at some point, is going to be litigated. I don't want us to be the ones, you know, be the first ones to say you have to have a shot, even though I think we should, and have us be the ones that have to go to court to litigate it. Mona, do you have any opinion on this?
And you've asked two questions, and I'll, I'll answer the second one first. There is clear federal law that supports an employer's mandating vaccinations. However, the potential exposure to liability is in the exemptions. In other words, for employees who assert a sincerely held religious belief or a disability that would preclude them from obtaining that and employing reasonable accommodations, those are the aspects that really are litigated, not the entirety of the mandatory vaccines. And this is something that the courts are seeing, and we are watching it unfold. So it would be speculative for me to, to tell you exactly how those, those are going to unfold. Second, you asked about liability. What would happen is we would continue to work through our contact tracing program and report to the county. It's very difficult to actually determine how someone contracted COVID, whether it would be a town employer or not. However, with respect to employees who were to contract the virus while they are working, whether it's from a colleague or someone in the public, they could be able to obtain workers' compensation for that. So, so we would have exposure there.
Okay. Any other member of the public want to opine on this? Make a public statement, comment? Okay, I don't see any. So I'll bring it back to council. Are we ready to give city manager direction other than to continue doing what we're doing at this point?
Madam Mayor, I think what I heard is continue doing what we're doing, but also craft some sort of public statement that we not only encourage the public, but we are encouraging our staff to be vaccinated.
Can we say strongly?
Encourage, yeah.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hawkins-Manwellyan asked about statistics. And the county is still posting on their website the statistics of the various different categories. And this is the slide about residents. And it shows that Atherton, pursuant to the statistics that they're collecting, is 100% vaccinated. Hard to believe, but that's what the stats say.
Wow, good going.
We were at 80% before we were supposed to be able to get vaccinations.
100%? Is that, did I read that right?
You did.
Wow, wow, well, that's good news.
Or, or, or it's an example of a data management issue.
Correct.
That, you know, all of our town employees are not residents, so.
That's true.
Ah, there you go. We have a very small staff. And I think that the percentage of staff who are vaccinated, fully vaccinated, is really very high.
I, I, if I could make just one other comment, I, I think this is a good position to take and direction to give. I, I, I do think that if this variant, and there have been several variants, and my understanding is that as these viruses reproduce, they tend to get, they, they change. And the variants are those changes. And if there are further more aggressive changes, or if this variant gets out of control, which there's concern in the press that it is, I, I would want to revisit this and require everyone to be vaccinated. And unless they have an exception, which I, I understand. And I, I also don't want to be involved in litigation, don't get me wrong. I do just think it's a moral issue.
Right, but what if there's a booster that is suggested or recommended, you know, because of another third type of variant that is highly aggressive? Then, you know, that's another conversation.
We shouldn't forget that the county's been pretty active, and the state's been pretty active with their own requirements. And they'll be all looking the same thing, too.
Good, okay, all right. Are we done with this item now?
We don't need to take a roll call vote on the certificate, the certifying the continuing emergency, though.
Oh, good. Okay, Anthony? Roll call?
Councilmember Hawkins? Hi. Councilmember DeGolia?
Yes.
I'll note that Councilmember Widmer has an excused absence. Vice Mayor Lempres?
Hi.
And Mayor Lewis?
Hi, thank you, thank you, Anthony. Good discussion, everyone. Next item, item number 12, is to consider the acceptance of a sculpture donation for the library deck from the Friends of the Atherton Community Library. And I know we have some members of the Friends with us tonight. So you want to tee that up, City Manager, or shall we let one of the members?
I can just note, you, you did have this brief discussion at the last council meeting where you saw an image of, of the artwork. But I don't want to steal their thunder. I can let Sandy go ahead and make a presentation.
Sure. Sandy, where are you? There you are, hi. Okay.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll be clear on this one. The Friends are excited and pleased that the library will soon be completed. And the concept for the commissioned bronze statue was agreed upon by all board members. The board unanimously selected American Bronze Sculpture Matt Glenn of Big Bronze in Utah as the artist from whom they would commission this piece. From concept through development, to design the goal for the piece was to create a sculpture that would welcome and encourage the library's youngest readers, ages one through 10, along with all visitors of all ages, to a wondrous and joyful world of literature. The subcommittee carefully considered copyright-related issues and chose to create a character of their own. The proposed location of the sculpture is along the deck, near the main entrance of the new library. The piece will be life-size, standing five to six feet tall, making it easy to move to the best location in the library, staff and visitors, for the staff and visitors' enjoyment. It would be placed so that children of all ages will be able to easily sit next to it to creating a natural photo opportunity. The project timing will be set once the council has approved acceptance of the donation. Upon donation, the sculpture will be ordered with an estimated arrival time of nine to 12 months. The subcommittee members met with Anne Marie Bidesbane, who represents the San Mateo County Library System, to present the project and discuss timing of the eventual arrival of the commissioned piece. The timing would be close to one-year anniversary of the new library. Anne Marie accepted the concept and agreed to the estimated timing as well. We also discussed and agreed the location will be near the entrance of the new library. The exact location will be agreed upon by the town, the San Mateo County Library, and the Friends. The FACL, or Friends of Atherton Community Library, will cover 10, one, I'm sorry, 100% of the purchase price, including inspection, shipping, insurance, installation, and all expenses associated with this donation.
Thank you. There you go.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
I've got questions. I'm sure other members of the council have questions. You go first. Any member of the council have a question for Sandy about the sculpture? There it is. It's Mr. Frog. Mr. Toad goes calling and reading a book. So can I ask my question first? I've got a couple quick questions. Five to six feet tall, that gives it some mass, and it's, it's going to be bronze, so it's going to be pretty heavy, I hope. It has an angle to it, and it, you talk about it being able to be moved from different locations on the deck. I, I just worry about kids climbing on it, pulling it over. Is there going to be a way to secure it in its spot without damaging the deck? You know, those kind of safety issues kind of concern me, especially with children wanting to climb on it.
Would you like me to respond?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is just a sketch. If you go to his, the website for Big Bronze in Utah, you'll see that all of the, all this, all the bronzes that he manufactures has a pedestal that's not showing in this drawing. So it's quite stable. Number one, it's not, it's obviously wanted to make sure it's safe, but. Number one, it's not, it's obviously wanted to make sure it's safe. But the other thing is, we don't want someone to borrow it or relocate it for us. So we're going to hopefully, well, our goal is to have that securely securely mounted wherever it ends.
I think it's very playful and fun. Anybody else want to make a comment? Rick, Diana, Mike? Okay.
Just want to say I love it. Absolutely love it. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Any member of the public want to say something? Christine, you have your hand up. You have to unmute, Christine. Yeah.
A second. Hi. Um, I just really wanted to, you know, a lot of creative hands came with a lot of different images and thoughts together as a community and came up with different ideas, and we listened to each other and we you know, argued with each other and we disagreed to agree and agreed to disagree. And the coolest thing is, is that, just like the library, the community of residents, you know, together, together, sorry, uh, came together to create art. And I think it reflects the art that is the the library and the Newtown Center. It's reflected there, and all of that, I think, reflects the joy of really, uh, you know, experiencing and, you know, not just literature, but exploring. So I just, I think there's a whole bunch of people to thank, and I only have three minutes, so.
Good.
Yeah.
You, Diane, Christine. So Alex, you have your hand up. Un unmute and you can, yeah, there you go. Unmute, Alex, there you go. Oh, Alex, we're not hearing you. I think he's got that same problem. You've got to take your headset off. Let's try it again. I can't hear you now. No.
Oh, now I know why. I had it actually muted on my computer, not on Zoom. But I just wanted to express my support for the sculpture. I think it's really playful. I'm a faculty member, too, so I was part of uh, looking at it, but I like it, too, so I'm supportive of of the the donation.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? It is full of whimsy. It's a lot of fun. It's joyous, has a book. I love it. Okay, so we need a roll call vote, a motion to accept. Is that right?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay, and Hawkins Manuelian, second, um, roll call vote, please. Uh, you have to unmute, Anthony.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you.
Councilmember DeGolia?
Hi.
Will also note, Councilmember Widmer's excused absence, Vice Mayor Lempres?
Hi.
And Mayor Lewis.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, friends. Thank you for all of your hard work over the years, and we are really looking forward to the this new library. Okay. Item number 13 is that a, an item having to do with the extension of construction time limit for residential project located at 55 Camino Porlo Siroles and the interpretation of the construction time limit enforcement clause. And I'm going to turn it over to city manager to tee this up for our discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is going to be very short for me because there are better experts in the room than I. Uh, this is a first for the town, and usually we hear construction time limit appeals once the projects are complete. Uh, this one is prior to that completion in the midst of the penalty assessment, and the project still has ways to go. Uh, so we need some interpretation assistance from the council, and I'm going to hand it over to the city attorney and the building official to continue on.
Thank you. Mona?
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. We're here before you today because we have a specific property owner who has contacted the town and has identified some instances where they believe that the construction of their property has been delayed due to reasons that are outside of their control, and they wish that the town waive any penalties associated with the extension in time for construction. So that's the specific issue before you today. However, I'd like to give you a little bit of background about what the construction time ordinance ordinance says today and what staff's recommendation is to the council in seeking direction for the future and as how it would apply in this particular case. So the existing ordinance currently allows the building official to determine whether a delay is excusable or not. In other words, excusable, uh, meaning within the property owner's control or not. If the property owner notifies the building official that they have not been able to complete construction on time due to reasons outside of their control, and they finish the construction within that 30-day timeframe, they are entitled to get their deposit back. That's not what's going to happen in the case before you because it's not feasible to to complete it within 30 days. So then the next step is that the building official has to make a determination after looking at the evidence applied by the property owner. Were these delays due to something on your part or something that you had no control over? If the building official determines that the delay is excuse, excuse me, if the delay is not excusable, then the town keeps the deposit, but the property owner cannot appeal the building official's determination until construction is completed. So they have to wait months or potentially a year before they can have that determination appealed. The existing construction time limit ordinance gives broad authority to the building official to do a couple of things. Number one, the building official can make a determination if the delay is outside of the property owner's control. Number two, um, whether the deposit should be waived or refunded. And number three, how much time the property owner has to complete the project? So because those have potentially large ramifications, that decision has come before the council to make sure that it complies with the council's policy on this item. So what we would like to seek direction from you on is uh, allowing staff to come back with a definition for excusable delays, meaning instances that were outside of the property owner's control, as compared to acts that the property owner did have control over. And then articulate, what does that actually mean? So if we have an instance where the property owner had no control and there was a delay to their project, does that mean that they no longer have to pay a deposit? Does that mean that they have to pay a reduced deposit and penalty? And then, very importantly, how much time do they get to complete their project? Additionally, we would like the council to direct staff to come back and allow an appeal of the building official's determination, maybe within 30 days of that decision and without having to wait until the project construction is completed. Um, and then finally, putting some parameters on the building official's discretion. So for example, if the building official decides that the delay um, is outside of the property owner's control and wishes to not collect a penalty, how much time does the property owner have to complete the project? We don't have guidance on that right now. So depending on how the council interprets and provides direction to staff on this ordinance, we will have clear direction on how that will then be applied to the property owner that is at issue in the staff report before you. And then I can also turn it over to Mr. Greenlee for any additional facts that he wishes to contribute.
Okay.
No, Mona, I think you covered quite a bit of it. But I, yeah, I'll answer any questions definitely regarding the C T L um, construction time limits that city council might have.
Okay. All right. Well, I'd like to bounce it over to our council members for questions, clarifying questions about this issue um, before we move on to individual comments on it. Any, Vice Mayor, yes?
Yeah, I just have a clarifying question, which is, I want to understand the timelines. Um, can somebody explain to me what the triggering event is? And then you have three years from that, and then you have 109 days in addition? And then 30 more days, is that correct, before any fine would attach?
No, so what it is, so for the three-year project, um, they get three years. And actually, it was additional 90 days um, was giving, given to the contractors on top of the 49 days that construction was shut down, that that had to be shut down. So for a three-year project, it was an additional 139 total days.
Okay, our staff are a little wrong on that, but we're at 109.
And then it looks like there's no fee at all for the first 30 days. You're late after that. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's a grace period of of 30 days. So on the 31st day, the the penalty starts.
Okay.
So just so I'm just unclear, so it's in this, right now, it's 169 days plus three years, so uh, three and a half years essentially before the first payment of any fee would come in. Is that correct?
So on on this project that we're talking about, so the, uh, it was issued December 5, 2017. The three-year C T L would have been December 5, 2020. That's three years adjusted. The construction time limit adjustment gave it till April 23. Um, so they came in and paid the first deposit of $30,000. So that has been paid. So the next deposit of $220,000 will be due on August 22, 2021. And
Thank you.
That, the net deposit will get them all the way through March 30, 2022. Then additional fees will be due again at $1,000 a day until completion of the project.
That's how the current C T L uh, ordinance is written, and I remember writing it. I think city manager wanted to chime in. Did you want to say something, George?
No, no, I'm good. Mike covered it.
Oh, okay, Mike covered it. Okay. Um, so did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you very much.
Okay, so Councilmember DeGolia? Yes.
So I just want to clarify what Mona stated that staff is looking for. Uh, because it initially was very clear to me, and then it got confusing. Uh, what I heard was, number one, uh, direction regarding allowing staff to come back to council with clarity on the definition of what are excusable delays. That is very clear to me and makes sense, and I think that that's an excellent recommendation. And number two, how much time would contractors get to, or or would the homeowner get to complete the job? That's a little bit clearer, less clear to me that we, and but but I understand the request, and I'd like to discuss that. Um, but I think there was more than the, just those two items. And, uh, and and so I, my my first question is just to ask you to restate whatever additional requests there are than those two items, which I think are relatively clear. And then the third item for me, from looking at the timeline, it, and and I'm not sure this has been requested, but it looks to me like the issue of appeal, the timing for the appeal is a fairly significant issue. Because right now, they can't appeal until the job is completed. And and so I'm asking whether staff is asking us to consider allowing that appeal to occur sooner, which would make sense to me because you're you're, we, the the current regulation forces the homeowner to be out of the deposit and whatever other penalties there are, and then they can appeal at the end of the project, which could be, and we know has been, in some cases, a considerable amount of time. So I'm just, so so the the essence of my question is to try to get clarity on exactly what's being asked for in terms of direction.
Need a whiteboard.
Well, for for being complicated, you summarized it very well, and I'll just fill in the gaps here. So yes, the first question is defining, providing some definition as to what an excusable delay is versus what's not. But assuming then that we have a circumstance in which we have an excusable delay, then does the council want to still require some sort of a penalty for that additional time? And whether the answer is, you know, a reduced penalty, no penalty at all, if it's excused, I'd like some direction on that. Um, and how much time does the property owner get then to complete the project? So that's all kind of under the umbrella of the definition of excusable and not. And then the second piece to that was presently, you're absolutely correct. A property owner cannot appeal the decision of the building official until construction is completed. And we are requesting that that appeal be allowed to occur before that time, and you can decide whether it's 30 days after the building official's decision, 60 days, but not necessarily have to wait until construction is completed.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, could I?
Yeah.
Now I'm the one who's a little confused.
Uh huh, that makes it, yeah.
There were three questions in the um, cover memo on page three.
Yeah.
Those are not what you just described, though, Mona. Has something changed?
No, uh, we're, so what we're trying to do is I believe that if we get just direction on those broader issues, we can then apply that to this specific property owner and ensure uniformity throughout the town should this type of situation occur again.
Okay. So I'll let Diana.
So I get it. You asked three specific questions in the cover memo. Is that? Are those, are those ones I should be looking at or or something different?
Um, those three specific questions are still valid for this particular project. Um, but the questions that I have asked you to consider, if you give us direction that would be applied globally to the construction time limit ordinance, will be used then to answer the three questions.
Thank you.
Right. Diana, do you want to go next? I have a question.
I don't. Let me think for a minute. It's kind of confusing.
Yeah, I know.
I do have some quest, clarifying questions, though.
No, go ahead.
Do we have such a thing as a board? That if I have a specific, and I'm I'm apologizing because I'm new to this. I don't know how the, how it currently works. If someone has a problem like this, do we have a board that allows, because we want to have a system set up where you allow someone to build some spectacular thing like these people are clearly doing, and I want to encourage it. But on the other hand, you don't want to make rules that then could be abused. So that's the line, it seems like we're threading here. But I'm wondering, when we have exceptions, how are those decisions currently made? Do we have a a board or is it an individual staff person who decides?
So, yeah, so we we don't have a board. Um, and far as decisions, I think, you know, the 10 years that I've been here, um, we had 26 final construction time limit projects that were in construction time limit. Out of those 26, only two appealed to the planning commission. Um, and those appeals were for a $30,000 appeal, and and both appeals were denied. Um, so anything above and beyond that, there's been a couple of times that we had a request, and if I receive it, um, I look at it, I validate it on my side, and I always send it to George for review and his remarks, and if it's okay. And those were actually, one was a death, and two were, um, were illnesses, cancer, uh, from owner builders. But other than that, that's the only time, and that's over a 10-year period, that we've allowed any type of, uh, extension.
With COVID right now and the the, uh, the shortages, there's all sorts of shortages right now. Uh, we couldn't get a refrigerator till fall, ordering in early summer. This is true of a bunch of different things. I don't know specifically what. But has there been any national or any other sort of precedent set about what we do with COVID?
You know, and when we, when this first came about, and then once construction was allowed to start, we came up with these additional days. Um, at the time, thought it was pretty generous, uh, because it's something that we didn't have to do as a town, but we did. And throughout the process, um, I kept hearing. And throughout the process, um, I kept hearing, it wasn't enough, Mike, it wasn't enough. And it's due to the COVID, um, to the extent, I, I don't know. Um, but that's all I've heard, delays in, um, in material fabrication, um, finding the proper, um, subcontractors, getting everybody, you know, getting the workforce back. It's been an issues, but to what extent, it's, it's really hard to say. Um, so that's where I'm at on that.
So the dates that you, the extensions that you gave were ones that were granted because of COVID, and tho- those were the judgment of, of you, that's how that happened?
No, no, and if I could just, right, so before, right, before you were on the council, um, council member Hawkins-Manuelian, uh, and when the shelter in place orders were initially enacted countywide, there was a brief time when construction was prohibited because of the fear of contamination. So the town took the time for which construction could not occur, plus it added a grace period and offered to every construction project in the town that additional time.
Okay. So, George, I know you want to say something, I would like to say something also, so, but go ahead, George, if you feel, you know.
No, I was just going to add to, to Mike and, and, in answer to Councilmember Hawkins-Manuelian, that we also have, as you know, an ongoing construction project for the town, so we're experiencing those same sorts of COVID situations that Mike's well aware of. And so he's able to a- assess what some of those impacts are, uh, based on that particular project as well.
So I have, uh, two very, um, uh, specific questions. Um, just to kind of say, within this timeframe of the last three years, um, how many homes in this specific, uh, or general square footed size range, uh, have been, uh, started and completed, uh, in this, uh, their three-year window? Um, that's the first one, so do you have a sense of that, uh, building inspector Greenlee?
You know, I don't have the exact number. Um, I know one was a thirty thousand square foot hall, finished less than three years. Um, then I got another one, it's over thirty thousand square foot, it's probably going to take more like five, five and a half years um, to complete. But on an average, I mean, we don't get a lot that hit the construction time limit. Um, like the ones I have five, or excuse me, four, within the last seven years, uh, approximately the same size. Um, paid the quarter of a million dollar construction time limit, um, never appealed. And they went anywhere from a little over five years to just under five years. So, and it ranged from fifteen thousand to twenty thousand square foot homes.
Well, I guess my question was, in this specific timeframe, the last three years, because of the COVID and the delays in materials and things like that, how many, um, homes, uh, you know, uh, or how many homes are, are likely to come and request, uh, uh, the, um, exemption of fines?
Well, the, the ones that are gonna, to try to get them exempt, uh, I got three that are in the, that haven't finalized yet in the same timeframe. Um, one hit five years. Um, two of them hit five years, and the other one's probably going to go six plus years, and far as I'm aware, there's not, not going to be an appeal on those, so. So I'm not going to have to give them extra time. Um, and some of the ones that we do see that request an extra time, you know, right when they give the thirty thousand, they even go over with me. It, it, my opinion, it doesn't meet the requirements of, um, you know, it's, it's, it's in the owner's control, may I, may I, you know, say, so.
Buying changes or, you know, extra, you know, time for, uh, redesigning or, uh, uh, intricate design or specialty.
Well, far as, I mean, this, this home here, we got a lot of beautiful homes in Atherton, but there's not another home like this one, far as uniqueness.
No.
Architect, ar- architectural, so, and it's going to take a lot longer, um, my opinion, for construction. Um, but like everybody else, you know, you're full aware of the requirements going into this, where the construction time limit. And unfortunate this, and this going on during, uh, during COVID. Um, but that, you know, as far as this particular job, they, they didn't have no stand, standstill time. You know, they worked every chance they could through this thing, and it's just, uh, unfortunate that they run across these, um, these issues.
And my other question has to go along with, uh, what, um, Mona is saying that, um, if we, um, grant them, uh, the, the right to appeal now, what happens when it's delayed, 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 uh, through the next year or year and a half? Uh, the reason for this construction time limit ordinance that was to put some penalties on, uh, the homeowners and contractors who just expect, uh, you know, four, five, six years, ongoing, ongoing. And that's why that thousand dollars a day, um, kind of kicks in after that first, uh, extension of a year, uh, because we want them to finish the home and not be in a construction zone, uh, completely forever and ever. Um, this is a very unique house, and I can't, uh, imagine that they thought that they, in any stretch of the imagination, that they would finish in three years, in, in perfect conditions. So, um, any other member of the public, uh, council want to, um, make a comment at this time? Uh, George, you have anything else to say? I'd like to open it up to the public. Okay, I'll open, uh, the floor, uh, to the public to, uh, ask any questions or make any comments at this time. And Anthony, you want to explain again how to do that for everyone?
Certainly can. For any members that are joining via Zoom link, you can use the participants button at the bottom of your screen. Raise your hand, or you can also send me a message in the chat, and if you're joining by phone, you can dial star nine in your receiver. I, I don't see anybody raising their hand there, but I will keep an eye out.
Okay, I see no member of the public, um, raising their hand, bring it back to council. Rick, did you want to say something? You looked like you were wanting to say something a minute ago.
Uh, well, I, I have a lot of thoughts on the issue. Um, I do think that what you said is accurate, that we very intentionally put this ordinance in place in order to protect residents who aren't engaged in construction. Because construction can be so disruptive, and as everyone knows, there are some blocks where there are a number of houses in the process of construction. And if that construction goes on for an inordinate amount of time, and we've had some serious abuses before we had this ordinance, where where construction in some cases by the homeowner had gone on for, you know, more than a decade. Uh, but I don't think that's the issue here, the issue is we've got serious construction that people are really paying attention to, they're not fiddling around with. But it, and, and I know this house, this house is close to where I live, I drive by this house every single day. And I got to say, it's been an incredible pleasure to watch this house go up because the design is truly remarkable. But the purpose of this ordinance isn't to protect the homeowner that is designing a remarkable house. Of course, we want people to design remarkable houses, and we don't have an architectural review board, which enables residents to build, as long as it complies with our requirements, wha- whatever they want to build. And we have extremely varied houses because of that, and I think that's to Atherton's credit, and I believe the developers think that also. Uh, but we have to protect our neighborhoods, and that's why we put this ordinance in place. I think it's a good ordinance, I like the idea of giving, uh, exception when something is out of a homeowner's control. Uh, I think the pandemic make, made things out of home, homeowners and builders' control. And I think that we responded, as Mike Greenlee said, rather generously to that, by giving a considerable time period, uh, for them to, uh, you know, that, that extended the, the time limit requirements. Um, I think that, and, and, and I, and I understand we're really dealing with two issues, which is the individual issue on, on this particular house on Camino de los Arboles and the general ordinance. Um, and, and so just my thoughts on the general ordinance are, I think it makes a hundred percent of sense for staff to come back to us with some suggestions for definitions of excusable delays. I understand that some other municipalities have similar ordinances where the excusable delays are listed, they're, they're, they're stated in the ordinance, and we don't. And so I think that would be an improvement for our ordinance. Um, the, the question of, uh, if there's an excusable delay, should there still be some penalty, maybe a reduced penalty? I'd say if there's an excusable delay for the period of the excusable delay, there shouldn't be a penalty. But that, just because there's an excusable delay, doesn't mean there should never be a penalty, an excusable delay should be, uh, provide an exception from the time limit for a defined period of time. And if the construction continues beyond that defined period of time, which, uh, which, which would be some reasonable time that, uh, that the building official determines, then there should be a pen, there should be the normal penalty come into place, just as we said. Um, I think with respect to, uh, how much time they should get, they should get the time to build. I mean, we want people to build houses in less than three years, we want to adversely impact our residents as little as we can. Uh, but if there's an excusable delay because there's something be, truly beyond the homeowner's control, then I think that time limit should be extended. Uh, and then if the construction continues beyond that, the full force of the ordinance and the penalties should come to bear. Uh, I do think the issue that's been raised about the appeal is a very reasonable issue to raise. I think it's, I, I think it's unreasonable to require uh, a penalty, a homeowner to not be able to appeal until the construction is done, because as Mike has just said, there's some construction that, while unusual, there's still some construction that goes five or maybe even six or seven years, who knows? So that's, I, I'd, I'd say, you know, thirty days or sixty days, I, I'd like to know what the staff recommendation is on that after the building official has made a determination that the homeowner can appeal. That, that would be reasonable to me. Now, sorry for taking so much time.
Cause I wouldn't give Vice Mayor a chance to make a comment.
Okay, but just let me finish, I've really thought about this issue, and I know this house. And I've looked, I've read everything that was here, I've, I, I, uh, I have looked at all of the photos that were provided. The house is remarkable, it is unique, everything that's said about that is true here. I believe the uniqueness of the house and the architectural design is one hundred percent in the homeowner's control. I don't believe that that's something that should provide a person an exception from the time limits. And the, the homeowner's letter is almost entirely focused on the Geary design and how unique it is and the materials, and how difficult it is to get those materials because of that design. All of that is within the homeowner's control. What isn't in the homeowner's control are the delays that occurred because of COVID. And we've given some delays for that, if because of this situation, the delays were greater because of the pandemic, I'd be comfortable to, with giving another thirty day or si- sixty day or ninety day delay, I'd like to know what staff recommends, some limited delay. But I would not agree that that the design is so unusual that it's out of the homeowner's control, the homeowner wanted that design, they went for a Geary design, which everyone knows is unusual and wonderful. But they've got a penalty to pay because of it.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember DeGoya. Vice Mayor Lampres, do you still have your thought that you'd like to, uh, make a comment on? If so, you have to unmute.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I, I'm happy to give my comments, I wasn't leaving you to give a specific, uh, comment, but if you'd like me to go, I'm happy to tell you what I'm thinking.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and then as I, I think I largely agree with, with, uh, Rick and what he just said. I, I, um, the single, but maybe I'm exaggerating here, one of the most common issues that residents raise with me is the amount of construction around town and how disruptive that is. And, um, if you recall, it was, I don't know, a year or so ago, maybe more because of COVID, so two or three, two years ago, we had a, a resident who had, I believe, five properties that were contiguous to his property, all of which were under construction. And that's an awful lot to go through as, as a resident, and so I do think that it's a valuable thing to encourage projects to be completed um, in a reasonable time period. I think three years is, is a reasonable time period, and it's, it's actually a little longer than three years, under all circumstances. Um, I, on the specific project, like Rick, I, I've seen it quite a lot, and it, and it is a, it's a, it's going to be a beautiful home, but there's no question about it. Um, a- and that's wonderful, but I like, I, I do agree that the design is in the control of the, um, homeowner. And if if there were specific things that we could point to that caused, you know, shortages caused by COVID that were spec, were extraordinary and unexpected, that to me is the kind of thing that, that would be an understandable delay for these purposes, but I in the absence of that, you know, the concept of the design itself isn't in the control of the homeowner. Um, I'd also, just going against some of the specifics, other points, the, the definition issue, like what's, what's a reasonable delay? I, I don't think it's a great idea to have that all writing in the, um, in the discretion of, of one extremely talented building official of the town. And I, and I do think it's a good idea for the, the staff to come back to us with, with some, some definitions, some reasonable definitions, and get some other statutes, I think that's great. I also agree with the, the issue about the timing of the appeal, I think it's, there's no reason not to wait till the end of things to find out what it's going to cost. Um, and these numbers are, are large, I, I, I will note that in the scope of some of the projects we've been describing, these numbers, the percentage of the cost are probably not that they're material, but they're not, you know, draconian. Um, so I, I'm sure I've forgotten a few things, that's generally, generally where I am, does that give the, the guidance you're looking for, Mayor, or the thoughts? Yeah, that's right, but I thought Rick did a great job of summarizing sort of where, where we are.
Yes, yes. Uh, Diana, do you want to weigh in on this again?
I agree with what has been said so far. I'm living through one of those situations, I have four houses in construction right now, within a block of my house. And that being said, um, the way we manage sound with all the rules that we have and people respond to it, it has not actually been that bad for me. But I'm going to say for other people, that's still a consideration of, you know, that's why we have the rules in the first place. I think this, in this particular case, I agree with everything that was said about, uh, letting the appeals happen sooner, uh, just about everything, everyone agreed, I would just err in this particular case of being generous, because I think the COVID situation is, has had, and, and also that whole big, um, that ship that blocked the canal was also responsible for a bunch of delays, and I know there's been delays in all sorts of things, so I think if we were to err, I would err on being generous at, at this particular time and, and granting times. So I guess that's all I would say.
Okay, all right. So I'll just wrap up and say that, um, I think that this design and have, um, this homeowner want to build, um, a spectacular, it's not a home, it's an art piece. And with, uh, this world-renowned architect is something that we will be proud of. Uh, and it is, uh, something that really I think could not have been built in any other town on the peninsula. Uh, Atherton's, um, relaxed building, uh, codes, we do not have an architectural review board, we do not have, uh, a neighborhood review board, uh, and so you really can build the house of your dreams. Um, what we do have is, uh, construction time limit, it's my understanding that when the plans and the homeowner met with the city, uh, building inspector, uh, in the very beginning, that it was, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Greenley, that this is very complicated and in conservatively would not be able to be completed within our construction time limit. I think that was well-known from the very beginning. And then just as construction, the staff report was excellent, very, very detailed. And I appreciate all of the work that the homeowner did in highlighting all of the issues that is being contended with. And I know that there's a myriad, a million more issues being juggled. And to my understanding, they have really pushed and pushed and pushed as much as they could and can every day to get the house completed. But the complexity of the design and the structural components just is, you just don't do it in a normal building experience, construction timeframe. So I will go along with my other council members about having the appeal, not waiting until the end of the construction. In my head, I feel that there may be more delays after this that, you know, go beyond the one-year extension that would need an appeal at that point, but maybe I'm just not looking at it correctly. So I think that, Mona, the first thing is to, I agree that staff should come back to us with a list of clearly stated areas where an exemption time limit would be made. And then we'll move on from there. Do we need a motion on this, George?
I believe it was just direction. Is that all you're seeking, Madam City Attorney?
Yes.
It was direction with respect to the general ordinance, but I would like to take a motion specifically with respect to the request that came before you from the property owners. And what I have heard, and just to summarize, and if a council member wishes to agree with this, they could make this part of their motion. But the council has found that the town has very intentionally put a construction time limit ordinance in effect to protect residents who are not engaged in construction. The purpose of that ordinance is to, again, protect the community and only allow exceptions if there's a delay that is outside of a property owner's control. In this particular circumstance, the uniqueness in architectural design is within the property owner's control and was a self-induced delay, given the intricacies. Having said that, and based on the information as submitted by the property owner, the town does not find that the, does find that the delay could have been avoided and does not waive any of the deposit or penalties associated with this project at this time.
So that would be that motion. I think that we were talking about maybe adding another reasonable COVID-related extension that would, is that what I heard Councilmember Hawkins, Vice Mayor Williams say, and even Vice Mayor Lempres, that three months or something like that to this project without the penalty, before the penalty starts.
So if the property owner can demonstrate to the town that there were some delays to the project construction having to do with obtaining supplies, materials, labor due to the COVID pandemic, they would be allowed a, an extension, which is commensurate with the duration of the delay.
Sounds good. George, you need to unmute. Yeah, good.
Just one note for that, provided that that delay affected the critical path of the project. I wouldn't want, you know, a delay related to window coverings to provide an extension versus a delay related to concrete or material unavailability or something like that.
Yes. Okay.
So they could work with Mike for that.
Does that sound reasonable? Okay. Any member of the council want to move on that motion, Vice Mayor? So moved?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was, I was.
Yes. Okay. So Vice Mayor made the first motion. Any other person want to second the motion? Councilmember DeGoya, are you still there? You can second it? Okay, Diana, yes. So we have a roll call vote, please. Anthony.
Could you restate the motion so that it's clear?
Yeah, no, wait a minute. Mona, just, did you have it written? Can you restate it again?
Yes. So we did receive general direction to make changes to the construction time limit ordinance. However, as to the specific property owner at issue here today, the council finds that it, the town very intentionally put the construction time limit ordinance in place to protect residents who are not engaged in construction. And the purpose of the ordinance is not to protect remarkable design, but rather the community. While the property owner has submitted evidence demonstrating the uniqueness in the architectural design, those aspects were within the property owner's control and the delay was self-induced. For those reasons, the town finds that based on the evidence presented with the staff report that the deposit and penalty are not overturned, shall be collected with the exception that if the property owner demonstrates to the town with evidence that there were COVID-related delays that impacted the critical path to construction, the property owner would be allowed to obtain an extension without penalty commensurate with the timeframe for that specific delay.
Could, Mayor? I don't know if it's an amendment. Can I just clarify that that reasonable extension based on COVID-related delays is, and that the property owner needs to demonstrate, as the city attorney just defined, is in excess of the days that have already been
Right.
allowed by the town?
Yes, that's understood. Yes. Yes, that's what we said. And, and city manager added the caveat that it has to be the critical path of construction, you know, substantial construction, not something like draperies that.
Or marble that has to come from a particularly unique location because of the unique design. I mean,
Yeah.
I understand. Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, we have a motion and a second roll call. Anthony.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilmember DeGoya?
Aye.
Note again that Mayor, Councilmember Widmer is excused absence. Vice Mayor Lempres?
Aye.
And Mayor Lewis?
Aye, thank you very much. Okay. I'm very excited to see this project done and I hope we can get it done within the next year. Thank you.
That's optimistic.
I try to be optimistic.
But can I just thank the city attorney for being very clear in the way that that was presented? That was, that was very well done, I thought.
Exactly. I concur. I was going to send you a personal note this evening afterwards. Okay. So, so item number 14 is consideration of responses to the request for proposal for the donor wall design, construction and installation, and provide staff with direction with respect to next steps. City manager, do you want to kick this off? I know what my feelings are.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Back in May, we issued an RFP soliciting for a vendor for design, construction and installation of the donor wall, provided them with specific schematics related to the wall size and what's to be on it. We sent that out to numerous vendors, as well as contacted some specific vendors to see what their level of interest was. At the end of the closing date of that RFP, we only received two respondents. One was from Corporate Sign Systems and the other was from Allison Aber, an individual. The response from Corporate Sign Systems provides a price point for the design of the wall, but doesn't provide any other financial, it's all TBD in relation to their proposal. Ms. Aber's proposal does provide a specific design for the wall, which is a three-pane on glass wall design, provides a price for that, price for square foot for etching, and and the specific material, so that there's no iterative process in Ms. Aber's proposal that would allow the council to to go through and talk about various different options for design. Her proposal is a specific design. And so we only received those two. So the council could choose to award the contract to one of those two specific vendors or could choose to revise the RFP and reissue it by rejecting both of those two vendors. Or the council could reject the bids or submitted and direct staff to work with WRNS on a specific scope of work, perhaps a subcommittee of the city council to create a design. And then we could bid that design for actual construction and installation. Staff's recommendation is that option, that we reject the bids, direct me to work with WRNS on a scope of work to complete the design with a subcommittee of the council and move that forward rather quickly. From my perspective, the benefits of that is we're working with a vendor that knows the town, knows the community, knows the building and knows the council. And I think that's important when we're talking about an iterative process of design. So that concludes the staff report.
So I, I know I'm supposed to take council comments first and everything, but I really believe that the donor wall is really the focal point of our lobby and it's really, really important that we get it right. And so I think that we need to do the, we need to really think this through. I should let other council members ask questions or make their comments and then we'll open it up to the public for their comments also. Vice Mayor, do you want to go first? No? Okay. Diana, anything to say? No? Oh, Vice Mayor?
I don't have any questions, rather, any questions?
Okay. Diana?
Well, of the two bids we got, it might be worthwhile people looking at the design that was on the table. Part of the problem is I wish we had structured our RFP a little more specifically to build in the reiterative process, which is normal. A normal design process, you get drawings and they do two or three drawings. None of that I don't think was in there. So if we do do it again, was it in there, George? And all of, both of them ignored it?
Yeah.
Wow. Well, the first, the one from the big sign company is tough because he doesn't even, they don't even say what materials it is. So they're basically throwing out what's a pretty high number with very little idea of which direction it's going to go. So that's a total unknown. And as George said, they don't have a lot of specific examples of donor walls, but they certainly are capable. Their portfolio includes a lot of, a lot of really nice signage that they've done that's very professional. So they're qualified, but the particular bid had nothing in it. The other one was very specific and it was frosted glass, which again was one of the materials we allowed. So maybe we should at least put that on the screen and discuss what her proposal was. But the last option, which seems to be the safest, which is going with the architect we've been working with, seems to be the safest. I think it will be the most expensive, but it will probably be the safest in terms of making sure that we have something that's consistent with what we've been trying to get.
Okay. I, Rick, I'll let you go before I ask.
Are we giving comments? Because that sounded like a comment. I have a comment, but I don't really have a question.
Okay. Let me open it up to the public. Okay. Any member of the public want to comment on this item?
We haven't had anybody new join, so I won't repeat it, but there are no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. So I'm going to bring it back. I, I just want to ask, I don't think WRNS in the end will be more expensive than either of these because I think both of these were not completely, you know, fleshed out. And I, I, my recommendation is, staff's recommendation, that we reject these two bids and form a ad hoc subcommittee to work with WRNS. I'm going to ask Mr. DeGoya to make his comment.
That I. Let me just start by asking George to restate what I think he sent out in an email today about what WRNS estimated its design cost would be.
Right.
Their design cost was around $7,000 to work with a subcommittee to create three potential designs for the council's consideration of moving forward, and then another 6,000 on top of that for them to create something that we could bid from.
Yeah. I mean, that's right in the ballpark of what these other people were talking about. And WRNS created the arch. Go ahead, Rick.
I, I actually think that WRNS will be more expensive, but I think we'll get more of what we want from them. I, I think that the the first RFP response was a non-starter. They really didn't respond. The second RFP response responded, but the estimated cost had nothing to do with design. It dealt with the materials. And, and what Diana said is right, that they, they suggested one of the materials that was a identified option, and I like that material. I don't have a problem with her design. I would be happy to discuss her design, but there's not really an estimated cost of what the design would be. My get, and because of that, I think it's just not as professional as WRNS would be. So I'm comfortable to go with WRNS.
Okay. So I think that, Vice Mayor, where'd you go? I lost you. There you are. What are your feelings about this? Reject bids and go with WRNS?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with management's recommendation.
All right. Do we need a motion on this?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
So I'd like to make a motion that we reject the two bids for the donor wall design. And we form a, an ad hoc subcommittee to work with WRNS and staff to develop concept designs, three designs and meetings and three concepts. And then to develop refinement and approval based on a selected design. So that's my motion. Can I get a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Anthony.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
DeGoya?
Yes.
Note that Widmer is excused absence. Vice Mayor Lempres?
Aye.
And Mayor Lewis?
Aye. Okay, thank you. So we're going to go on to item number 15, the Knox Play School Amendment to Lease to address the COVID-19-related rent reductions for September 1, 2020 through August 30, 2022 period. City manager, you want to tee this up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You've got staff on the line as well, but this is consideration of an amendment to the current lease with Knox Play Schools, reducing the payable rent amount for the September 1 through October, I'm sorry, through August 2022 term. The reduction in rent is basically based on the number of students that Knox Play School can actually have, but their facility is still under the COVID restrictions. And it represents about a $20,000 loss to the town for what we would normally receive in rent. $20,000 reduction. At the time of the staff, as noted in the staff report, they continue under the student spacing requirements. It was asked about how many students there or kids there were Atherton residents. They encourage Atherton residents for priority enrollment. But at present, there's only seven coming up in the school year out of their numbers of kids that they have signed up, more likely in the summer, but that's not tracked by them. Susan Knox is on the phone as well. If the council has any specific questions with respect to their operations or the amendment. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you. I'll ask any member of the council if they have any questions on this. Yes, Diana?
I have a question. Is the loss to the city covered by the grants that are putting out for, to protect us? I don't know what they're called, you know, I'm referring to the.
The ARPA grants, yes.
ARPA.
So we'll, we'll get the money back through the, those.
It's not really that, that it's applied to. We're not going to actually get it back. We get the allocation, but that can be a represented loss of revenue to the town.
Thank you, Diana. Vice Mayor? Thank you, Diana. Um, Vice Mayor? Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember DeGolia?
No question.
So my, I have no questions. Um, I have a comment. I, you know, uh, this is really hard. It's, it's, it's been hard for all the schools and, uh, certainly hard for, um, Susan and the play school. And I think it's, you know, I think this is a reasonable request. Uh, any member of the, um, public have a comment on this? Okay, so you know, hands raised. Bring it back to council. Further, further discussion? Do we need a motion on this?
Yes.
Any other discussion? So, um, anybody would like to make a motion to, uh, accept this, uh, uh, year's lease at a reduction, uh, equal to about $20,000 for this next year?
Yes, I, I'll make the motion.
I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
DeGolia?
Yes.
Uh, note, Woodmer is excused absence. Vice Mayor Limprous?
Aye.
And Mayor Lewis?
Aye. So the next item is item number 16. The review of our battery operated leaf blower pilot program. And George, are you going to take it or is, uh?
I am. I believe we have staff on the line as well, but I'll, I'll, I'll kick it off. And then we also have a video, uh, that, uh, staff will put on the screen to show. Uh, pursuant to council directions, staff purchased an EGO power backpack blower. I don't have that kind. I've got a Ryobi one down in, in my garage. Um, with a 7.5, uh, amp battery and a five amp battery spare with a rapid charger for use by MCE staff in the park. Uh, the direction was to, uh, experiment with the battery operated leaf blower in the park for about a six month period. Compare it to the gas leaf blower operation and then report back to council with the caveat that we would not be using it uh, during any noted spare the air days. Those spare the air days are noted in the staff report. I believe there were three during that period of time. Uh, so the staff report talks about the comparison between the two, but in general, uh, the DBA levels weren't dramatically different. Uh, they were different in the battery powered operated, uh, leaf blower was a little quieter. Uh, then the primary difference was the operation of the unit, the weight of the unit and how well it performed, uh, with different types of vegetation in the field. When it was used with wet, damp or heavy, uh, leaves, it was not as effective as a gas powered leaf blower. Uh, so during this particular season of the year, it was, it was all right. Uh, but in the winter seasons, uh, a battery operated unit probably would not be. Um, the other issue was related to, um, its effectiveness on grass areas up and down sidewalks versus the tennis courts. It seemed to be effective on the tennis courts, but was not effective in the lawn area of the park. So I'm going to turn it over to who from staff is here? Is it you Sally or David? Sally, are you there or frozen?
No, she's there. She's just, I'm going to unmute now.
I'm here.
All right. Are, are you going to provide any additional information or is David on the line as well?
Um, I mean, I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, uh, then why don't we go to, there's a video that staff produced, that Robert produced that is a representation of the noise as well as the power operation of the two units. And again, it's not a public education video. It's just for information for the council. If the council wanted to, from this item, produce a public education video, we could certainly do that. Uh, so Anthony, if you will, cue that video up. So what we hope to, uh, thanks Anthony, uh, to get from this meeting is some direction from the council on maybe some next steps. Uh, maybe a suggestion would be to return this issue back to the environmental programs committee. Have them take a look at the issue and even further, maybe do some community outreach and some additional education. Maybe even form a city council subcommittee that could work with a subcommittee of the EPC on that same item. If the council's interested in further public education and information, uh, do some additional surveys of other communities. We did some in the past. You've got prior reports from that in November, in January. Um, or if you're, you're prepared to make a, a direction to staff to prepare an ordinance to move forward based on something that we had back in January, we're open to that conversation as well. That concludes the staff presentation.
Great. Wow.
Mike was eating popcorn during that video I saw.
Any member of the council want to make a question, ask a question about this? Mike, Vice Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. I, um, I guess my question's kind of a broad one and I don't know to whom I'm asking it, um, on staff. But there, I, part of the reason we asked for this to be done was to sort of, I think the phrase is eat your own dog food to see what we could learn from doing it ourselves. Um, and I'd love to hear somebody summarize what they think we learned in terms of the utility of these on a, you know, on a one acre lot, not on, not at the park necessarily, but on a one acre lot. And, and whether our use of it gave, gave any kind of new insight, um, from staff about whether it was a good idea or not a good idea to be requiring this for folks in, in town.
Sally, you can jump in there if you like, and I can follow up.
Okay. So I don't think we learned anything new. I think the electric blowers will be great for the tennis court in smaller areas. Um, also seasonal this, during this time of the year, that it would work great. However, in the winter, I worry that, um, it's going to take a lot of staff time to, to blow the whole one acre lot. Currently, um, they have to change the battery just to blow the path all around the way to the park. So I'm assuming in the winter, they're going to have to have extra batteries, uh, just to do the pathway along the park. Uh, but I don't think we learned anything new. Uh, because we knew that the electric blowers weren't going to have as much power as the gas power. And, and, um, from MCE's point of view, I feel like, uh, they tend to use the gas power, uh, blowers more often. Uh, I think it's, they feel like it's more efficient, even though, uh, the level of the sound for the other blowers less and the, and it's also lighter. Uh, they tend to like using the gas blowers better because it takes up less time.
Okay, thanks, Sally.
Anybody else? Rick?
Well, I do have a question, but it really isn't applicable to this. Um, my question, my question is, in the staff report, it states that, um, pursuant to council direction, staff purchased an EGO power backpack blower with a 7.5 AH battery and a spare 5 AH battery. And then it goes on to state that the 7.5 battery that was sold with the unit lasts 30 to 40 minutes and the 5 AH battery lasts half that time. So my question is, why did we buy a 5 AH battery and not another 7.5 AH battery? Which would have doubled the time that the electric blower would have operated?
I, I think it was, uh, an opportunity to provide a comparison. I mean, if we know what a seven and a half is doing, then.
So it was a test?
Yeah, it's just the pilot.
Okay, that's good enough. Thank you.
Diana?
I don't have any questions. Are we taking comments?
Well, let's, uh, open it up to the public, um, for their comments first, and then we'll bring it back for discussion. Any member of the public want to, uh, talk about, uh, I think John Maltbesch has his raised hand. Yes, John, if you could unmute yourself?
I think I have. Thank you.
Good, there you are.
Oh, well, I speak as someone coming off a 25 year consulting career of running field tests. And watching the video of this field test, I think Sally had it exactly right. I don't think we learned anything we didn't know. The electric blowers are quieter. Somebody said it was just a few DBs, but a DB is a logarithmic scale and a few DBs is a lot. And that came across in the video. The gas powers have more power and they work better. I don't think the issue anymore is are gas powered mowers noisier? Yes, they are. Are the others, do they work better? Yes, they do. The issue is, do the residents that Rick was earlier saying your job was to protect care more about the noise than the performance? And I think that's what you have to deal with, not, and learning anymore about these blowers.
Thank you, John. Thank you. That's very insightful. We have another resident's hand raised. Patty, Spessa Farrow?
Right here. Yes, I, thank you very much for taking, um, my call here. My husband and I are very passionate about the leaf blower. I'm a master gardener and I understand, like, uh, nobody likes a leaf blower, especially if you're a gardener because also for soil health, it, it, um, it erodes the top soil, which is not good for the garden. Also, this noise is a problem. Um, you know, we, you know, we come to Atherton for the peace and quiet and then we hear the, the leaf blower and that's not really what we paid for. Um, but, but having said that, uh, being a gardener also is that it would take a lot more time and our, uh, our gardens already are expensive to maintain and to go to a lesser, um, mode of blowing may impact also people's budget because, um, it would, because of the time factor, just simply is that. Um, that's, that's what I want to say. And Ross, I think you're also, uh, passionate about this issue. Would you like to say something?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm conflicted. Um, as you know, I, I'm really for, you know, reducing emissions and all that sort of stuff. Um, and I, I think the electric leaf blowers, as they are, the battery powered units are just nowhere comparable to the gas powered units as, as much as they're annoying in so many different ways. Um, if you were to go for an extension powered unit, extension cord powered unit, we have a problem because our properties are so large, uh, and in many places, there are not electrical outlets. You would have to have a portable generator on the gardener's trucks to power their electric cord, uh, to run their electric leaf blowers. So, um, I, I view this as, electric leaf blowers today, they're kind of sort of nice and it would be nice to encourage them where they make sense. But it wouldn't make sense to ban existing leaf blowers because they're so practical. That's would be it.
Okay.
Thank you very much for hearing us.
Okay, thank you. Any other member of the public want to, uh, make a comment about this? Okay, bring it back to council uh, for discussion. Um, I'll, uh, let other council members talk. Diane?
Um, if we remember where, how we started down this path, there was a lot of opinions on both sides. And there were, in front of us were a bunch of different suggestions, some that were put forward by the EPC. Um, so it's not as simple as just banning. There, there's a whole bunch of other choices. There's two strokes and four strokes. Many, many places are banning the two stroke. Those are particularly loud. And, um, is that right? It's, yeah, they're banning the two strokes. It's particularly loud and polluting. The other issues we talked about were blowing on spare the air days because if you use a blower after, uh, a, a fire incident, when the air is full of ashes, people are blowing up really toxic ashes. And there's already all sorts of information about how it affects allergies and health issues. On a normal day, there's old pieces of feces and fertilizer, whatnot being blown around. So there's that whole set of issues. So it's a pretty complicated issue. And the last time we talked about it, we had a bunch of different things before us. So I think the next step might be to, I know that the EPC has just formed a, uh, new subcommittee to look again deeper at this and come back with us of the next iteration because there was a proposal and then they did some recommendations. And then we ended up saying, all right, let's give it more time to do this task. So I, I think that, uh, it would be useful to hear what the EPC has to say when they get back to us and perhaps see if we could do something ourselves in terms of creating a subcommittee to explore the next step because we have to have something in front of us to talk about, you know, a proposal of some sort.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, so if I could just kind of make a comment, I, honestly, I think the video um, was, uh, glaringly, um, uh, obvious about the difference in power. Um, I, you know, I re, I, I wonder what we did before we had leaf blowers. I mean, there is a rake, there is a broom, and I tell you, I could have cleared that debris with my rake and my broom and my, you know, and it, in no time at all. And I just don't understand why we don't use that technique a lot more. Uh, so I, I, it just boggles. I, I don't want to get too wigged out about it, but I know. You know, they say, well, you know, we'll make our gardeners or, you know, landscape maintenance guys work too hard. Rick, would you like to?
Yeah, no, I, you, you took the words out of my mouth. Uh, you know, there are two things that jumped out to me in that video.
Yes.
Number one, there frankly, in the video wasn't that much sound difference between the gas powered blower and the electric powered blower. I was surprised by that. the gas-powered blower and the electric-powered blower. I was surprised by that. Uh, because I think what John said is absolutely right that, you know, decibel, decibels are based on a logarithmic scale. And so a couple of decibels is fairly significant. But in that video, I was surprised that it wasn't that dramatic.
Well, I think the microphone was a little closer to the, you know, whatever. I think.
Maybe, but but let me, let me go on. But the thing that was totally dramatic to me is that pile of leaves should have never been managed by a leaf blower. That was a huge pile of leaves that would have probably filled a whole, you know, black plastic bag of stuff that you'd take somewhere and.
I I wouldn't characterize, I'd just be ca- just as a comment, that probably was not their normal method of removing that little section of vegetation. They may have used other methods.
Well, I I understand, but but it it's a relevant point.
Yeah.
But because let me just continue, because if you're trying to manage that large pile of leaves and in this case, it was dry and if it was wet, it would be horrendous. With a leaf blower, you're going to have problems. But that should be managed with a rake. If if what you're doing is blowing a few leaves with a leaf blower, which is what you're going to do if you're walking around the two-mile path that goes around the park that most people walk, I think the electric leaf blower would do just fine. Now, it it's going to take, you know, probably two seven point five A H battery packs to make it happen, but that pile of leaves should have been handled by a rake. So to me, I I the video showed that the gas-powered leaf blower moves more material. Like George just said, that was the purpose of the video and and that was successful in showing that. But when you're dealing with a small amount of leaves, which is really what most leaf blowers should be used for, you know, to, I mean, uh, they, the the staff has said the electric leaf blower will work just fine on the tennis courts. Well, if the electric leaf blower will work just fine on the tennis courts, it's going to work just fine on the path going around the park. What it's not going to work just fine on is those areas like along the courtyard where that video was shown, where there are enormous number of leaves because they haven't been cleaned up for a couple of weeks. And in that case, there should be a rake.
Yeah, agreed. Okay, anyway. Anybody else want to talk about this a little bit more? Vice Mayor Lempres?
I I just, I want to make sure we keep our eye on the ball. I feel like we're conflating some some issues here. One is what the town should do and the other is what we should be requiring of residents. And so they're very, they're very different questions.
Right.
Um, and I think I agree with with Diana's point about um, you know, let's get something specific put together by by some subcommittees to look at it, make some recommendations and and kick it around. My, my preference would be if if we could figure out ways to encourage people to do the kinds of things we want to do uh, bef- before we, you know, look at banning things that they're doing now, presumably because they're best meeting their needs now. Um, so before we we start banning things, I'd love to see if we could take steps to encourage people to do other things like, for example, rake. And then, you know, that'd be, that'd be a good thing. I I don't know what those would be, but I I would love for whoever's looking at this to consider those options uh, and go from sort of the least intrusive to most intrusive as we are.
Okay, agreed, agreed. Yeah, and Diana?
I totally agree with what was said and what would be useful is we do have these venues for pumping information. We're updating our website and we have the Athertonian that we, there was a really lovely article just this summer issue about some of these issues, but there, there needs to be a cultural paradigm shift in how we look at our yards. And so we can do that by education. And also in informing people of the health risks that are associated, that it's not just the sound, there are health risks associated that are going to get worse and worse as we have more pollutants in the air. So yeah, the first step clearly should be education. Um, and I I will reiterate what I said before, that there's a lot of different things we can do short of banning. And there's a lot of different pieces of things that we can look at separately, like what kind of equipment? What are there, we limiting the times? How do we deal with resident versus commercial? So there's a whole bunch of complicated questions. I'd like to see us get a specific recommendations or at least some ideas in front of us.
Okay, so I think what we're recommending is that we uh, send this back to the Environmental Programs Committee to um, flesh it out a little bit more and come up with an educational, resident educational uh, marketing plan and with all sorts of uh, encouragement, good ideas, good practices. I mean, for instance, the the other thing that just I find is the blowing of the right-ofways outside our homes uh, in the streets. And it's, you know, there's redwood uh, little pine needles that come down and stuff. But, you know, people blow their gutters and there, it's just all this street stuff that is just blown up and you, you know, come through it. And I don't know how we can address that because I guess people want to have the perimeter, the outside perimeter of their homes pristine somehow on the street, but it's really, it it blows up a lot of pollutants. So maybe we can look at that also, Diana, in the E P C committee. Is that enough direction? Do we, I I think.
Just for clarity, that's the consensus of the council, sending it back to the Environmental Programs Committee to help to have them work on some sort of ordinance that can be considered by the council for adoption with various levels of options running the gamut and also developing an education and outreach campaign for the community on all of the issues covered uh, in the leaf blower conversation we've had today. And maybe, uh, I don't know if that's also part of the council direction, work with a city council subcommittee on that.
You want to do that? Okay.
That's, I got, I got three nodding of heads. Is that?
Mike, you weren't nodding.
If if, yeah, if it's helpful, let's do one. That's all. I I always just wasn't convinced we needed one, but if people want one, let's do it.
Okay.
I'm clear. Thank you.
Great, okay. All right, well then, let's move on to our next agenda item, which is item number seventeen. Uh, consideration of acceptance of a twenty-one thousand dollar donation in support of the purchase of additional automated license plate readers, A L P Rs, and direction regarding the lease of an additional ten A L P R cameras.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor, members of the council. I believe the chief is on the phone as well. He's on that four-two-five number. He can unmute himself to be prepared to to talk, but I'll introduce it. This is, as you said, consideration of an acceptance of a twenty-one thousand dollar donation toward the purchase of four additional A R, A L P R cameras for El Comino Real. Uh, and at at the specified locations within the staff report, that would bring our total cameras to forty-seven, which is a pretty high number. Um, there was an email that went around just as information. There was an email that went around today uh, to the City Managers Association of San Mateo County, originated from the city of Woodside, asking uh, what cities have A L P R cameras stationary and vehicles? And uh, of the responses that uh, came back, there were a significant number of respondents in the jurisdictions that are going to be either installing them, considering them, or already have them and just haven't publicized them. Uh, so they're, they're out there. Uh, we probably have the most.
Okay, uh, any member of the council have a question or clarifying question about this item that's in front of us? Seeing none, any uh, member of the public have a comment about it? Okay, seeing none, uh, any member of the council have a comment that they'd like to make about this twenty-one thousand dollar donation for um, new A L P R cameras along El Camino? And it's for two years, right?
Yes.
Okay, Rick?
So I think I think that this public-private partnership that the police have put in place is terrific. And I support this a hundred percent.
Okay, um, Diana?
I totally agree with that. I I'm thrilled to have this happen. I don't know what's going to happen at the end of the two years, but that seems so far away in terms of technology and what's going to happen next that I'm ready to just go with it.
Okay, and Vice Mayor?
Um.
I I think we're, we're going down this path. I have reservations. I've had reservations about this path and and I'm, I believe we're overselling the utility of these. But um, yeah, I'm still, I'm supporting, let's continue and and see where we go and and continue to mo- to monitor and see how it works out.
Okay, so I also agree and, you know, I am part of a residential neighborhood group that I've supported. Um, we were early on in that. Um, and uh, I think that we have seen evidence of these A L P Rs um, having some positive effect uh, in our uh, crime. And I should let the chief kind of highlight some of those. Chief, would you be willing to do that?
I would. Thank you, Mayor. So yes, our successes have been, as you know, the attempted murder case that we had in Lloydton Park. Uh, recently, they arrested a pedophile who chose to expose himself in front of a twelve-year-old girl on her way home from school. We've had numerous uh, stolen vehicles stopped with armed suspects, people on parole. So we have bad actors moving through our community. And these cameras, I got to tell you, have been a game changer. And for our vendor, uh, Atherton has become kind of a flagship for other law enforcement agencies. I routinely receive calls from other chiefs across the country. They they hear about our successes, they want to know about them. Uh, I can't speak highly enough of this technology. I do agree that we have a large amount of cameras and I believe, no pun intended, we're kind of flocked out at this point. Um, but I, it has been, like I said, a game changer for us and I anticipate you're going to find more successes in the future in just the short seven months that we've had them installed in our town.
So Chief, I I hate to do this, but let me just push back a little bit on that. Um, I I know that we've pulled, we've, we've managed to identify a number of stolen cars and other things that people are driving through town with. I, you mentioned an attempted murder and a um, uh, uh, it's not a child molester, somebody exposed himself, I believe, but my understanding is that the flock cameras were of help. They were not necessary in those instances. They were helpful. Am I misunderstanding that? Are you saying they were the cause we that we?
No, I think you're misunderstanding because in the attempted murder in Lloydton Park, without the cameras, we would have absolutely had no information or evidence or the vehicle that fled the scene that led us to the arrest.
I'm sorry, Chief, I thought you told me there were witnesses to that, that there were two witnesses standing in the driveway who saw it. Who identified.
They did not have our. No, they did not have the license information, so that without the license, vehicle license information, a make and description of the car might be helpful, most often not. But because of flock, we had the license plate number, which led us to the owner of the grandmother who identified her grandson as the violent gang member from San Francisco and accomplice who were the suspects. Again, the same thing for the known registered sex offender uh, out on parole who chose to expose himself to the twelve-year-old girl. Without the flock cameras, we would not have had the information to place him at that location and identify his car.
Okay, I mean, I'd love to chat with you a little maybe offline about that. I feel like the the story has evolved, at least it it maybe I'm misremembering. But I I I don't recall the others being that clear, but I'm sure you're remembering it properly.
Okay.
Happy to talk with you.
Yeah.
All right, so um, well, at this point, um, I think that I have got to plug my computer in. It's going to die on me. Um, so we need to um, have a motion to accept this donation.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, roll call. Anthony?
Council member Hawkins?
Aye.
Taglia?
Aye.
Noting Woodmer's excused absence, Vice Mayor Lempres?
Aye.
And Mayor Lewis?
Aye, thank you. So this is going to be our um, third to last um, uh, agenda item. We have the Town Center Project Update. And then we have council reports and comments and then we adjourn. So Town Center uh, update and we received our uh, information. So Marty or uh, who's going to?
It's me, the mayor. Um, just uh, one note before I move on to this, on the last item, in September, there will be a a planned report from the police chief on the successes, the implementation of the A L P R cameras and how it relates to the burglaries that have occurred in town. He's working on that report uh, as we speak, so you'll get an update on that. Uh, so the Town Center Project Report is just informational this evening. However, there is an item within it, uh, noting the emergency responder radio coverage issue. I think I've spoken to a number of you individually on that particular item. Uh, it's uh, one of those planned issues that's come up after the plans were bid and awarded and contracts out there and come to find out, hey, we need this particular coverage and it's being required by the fire district, the fire marshal is part of the fire code. Um, it's going to be a fairly significant change order at this point, as far as we can tell. So one of the suggestions is maybe we circle back to the fire district on this particular item and ask if there's any opportunity for financial partnership on it, since it is a fire district-specific requirement, a fire code-specific requirement. So um, I've already talked to a couple of members of the council about it, but I'm interested in the council's feedback this evening if they think that's an appropriate reach out.
Okay. Um, any comments on this about the um, signal levels? I want to know how how will we operate if we try to get the P D over there and and it's not up and running?
It's not a P D radio issue. It's a fire district radio issue and they've said that they would give us a temporary certificate of occupancy and it is merely, excuse me, in the event that fire needs to respond into the building and they need to start clearing rooms, uh, there may be small sections of the building and these are back where, I mean, you guys walked the building as part of the V I P tours back in the armory where the wall's a little thicker and there's no windows. In that particular section, they may not be able to communicate using their particular frequency radios.
It sounds like my house because all my communication's in the, in the basement.
Yeah.
Rick, Rick, Rick?
I have two questions. First is, is this issue a condition from the fire department to give us a um, occupancy permit?
Yes.
And the second question is, you know, I'm always nervous about too much um, uh, online access opportunity. And we see all kinds of problems nationally and internationally with, because the criminals are totally focused on this issue, right? A a a hundred percent, they're focused on it. And to the extent that government isn't as good as the criminals, they're going to figure out how to break it. And it, so giving some kind of online access to the fire department into the middle of our armory, is that gonna, I mean, which, you know, frankly, I I I'm very concerned that we have good fire protection in the whole building. The middle of the armory is the last place I'm really seriously concerned about. And I don't want to give somebody else potential access to that area. Uh, we'd move the armory from the wall of the building that it exists in now where somebody could.
Punch a hole in it.
So so this is V H F Secure Radio Communications, uh, not uh, online telecommunications type.
Okay, so so you, what you're telling me is there's zero risk that the criminals will figure out that code to be able to get in?
Yeah, it's it's not connected to the entry systems or anything like that. It's their emergency responder radio communications V H F channel. Uh, the P D uses a higher channel than that. The chief can express that differently than I can, but it's V H F Fire Radio Communications requirements and it is a required certificate of occupancy item.
I I I concur with your concerns. Uh, and you know, one of our other um, audit, you know, we ta- we talked about this cybersecurity stuff, you know, and it's real, so. It's really, and it's scary. And I I hope that our, in in looking at our communications in that building, I mean, there's wires going everywhere and communication cables going everywhere and I sure hope. I mean, there's wires going everywhere and communication cables going everywhere. I sure hope that, you know, we've got them tightened up. Um, Vice Mayor, do you have a Diana?
Just quick, I'm sorry, Diana, go ahead.
It's a wireless booster, correct, for, uh, VH? Yeah. So it's a specific free frequency and it's a booster and is it a state requirement?
Yes, state code.
State requirement, okay.
Yeah.
It, it does seem like a lot of money for a, a VHF booster, but.
Yeah, you know, you, I, when I was first being told about this issue, I'm thinking I've got to add a repeater like I do for my wifi signal at home and it should be this fifty dollar thing you can just plug in. Unfortunately, that's not the case. This is a, an entire coolant system with a VHS, VHF booster requirement that's got to be AC controlled. It's, it's not a small deal.
Remember, there, there came down a whole request or a requirement actually for the, was it the same, these same communication things to be encrypted? And we were given a set amount of time to encrypt these emergency communication systems. Is this the same one?
No.
That was PD.
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
So I'm sorry, George, just now I'm, are we going to be paying the air conditioning and cool this unit forever and the off chance there'll be a fire someday and the fire department will have better communication? Wow, that seems.
Basically, yes.
That seems surprising. Okay.
Yeah, I, 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 I am a hundred percent where you're going, Mike. And if we could avoid it, we should.
So are they also requiring that in some of our very, very large residential homes?
That I, that I don't know, uh, but it, it's, it's required in this building. I don't believe it's a requirement within the, uh, library. It's, they've got sufficient coverage within that building, but not within the town center.
This is our emergency center, you guys. This is our emergency response center we're talking about. It's not, we're not talking about somebody's home. So the fire signals, emergency fire signals have to work in our emergency response center. So I guess I feel opposite of everyone here.
But our emergency response center is the council chambers and I, I don't have any problem with that. But this is dealing with, you know, something on the other side of the wall, which is the armory.
I don't know that it's the armory, uh, council member Goglia, but that was just an example of an area that doesn't have any windows and doesn't have any external communication.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
I thought we asked some questions to the fire department to clarify, to clarify the need for it, but if it's a state requirement, I think we're going to end up having to do it. And I thought it had to do with the ability to evacuate buildings in emergency response that they can't get, receive the signal in all the rooms. So let's say they don't get it in George's office and he's working away and everybody else is evacuated and he doesn't hear the signal. So that's how I understood it to do and it sounded pretty essential to me. But maybe we should meet with the fire chief and ask some questions as we're asking.
With all due respect, we, 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 we've been meeting with them since November, December of last year uh, to try and refine exactly what's been required and we've narrowed it down to as little as possible and that's where we are today.
So George, Chief McCully would like to, he's got his hand raised. He's got a comment on this. Chief? Go.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, just for clarification. So what this is, is a requirement, not so much for this, apparently our size of the building qualifies, but it's more for large-scale buildings like in Foster City and South City where the fire department and police, once you get inside these large buildings, you lose the capability to have emergency communication where they are requiring these buildings to have repeaters so that we have that capability. I don't know that we do not have that capability in this building and it's something that we can check with fire. I will work with fire to communicate it, but it might be based on a restriction for the square footage of our building. So it's all about emergency communications when the responders come into the building to be able to communicate with each other and back to dispatch.
That, that's. Nine eleven interoperability issues?
No, it has nothing to do with that. It has nothing to do with nine eleven. Has everything to do with the police radios in the car and the portable radios that we carry.
Fire, fire.
Fire and, and.
Isn't that the interoperability issue that, that everybody threw money at after nine eleven?
Uh, well, that, that one has more to do with agencies being able to communicate with each other. This one has more to do with them being able to communicate with themselves from within these buildings. Uh, and we, we have done testing of these buildings, uh, chief. Uh, so we, we've already talked to the fire chief and the fire marshal. We've, we had to actually put the doors on the building to find out where the gaps were in the building in that communication system. So all of that's been done. We're already at that finish line point and so that's why it's on your agenda.
Okay. Honestly, it, it does seem like it's an essential thing for us to approve.
So, and you're, yes, uh, but what I'm asking this evening is, do you think it's appropriate for perhaps the, the subcommittee or representative of the council to reach out to the fire district to ask if there's an opportunity for financial partnership?
Oh, okay. Yes.
Yeah, so, um, first, I think this has to do with the two new technology that the fire department is adopting, which is absolutely remarkable technology. Where every firefighter has a little unit on their helmet that when they go into a building, that transfers information to a server. That somebody sitting at the server is able to understand and communicate to other firefighters. And that enables them to both find people and seriously avoid risks. So it, it, I, I've seen demonstrations of it on the, the fire board, uh, you know, meetings where they've showed it. And it's truly remarkable technology. I, I think it's game changer technology that's going to save firefighters' lives, which is an extremely dangerous job. In our build, and, and as the chief said, this is a, a big concern for large buildings like you'd have in South San Francisco and and in other large cities. Atherton's, uh, Police Department building is not that large. But if you get into the armory, you're going to be totally secure. So out of the armory, you're not going to, if, if you're a firefighter, nobody's going to get your little communication from your device on your helmet. So I, you know, but I don't think we have much judgment on this. If it's required for us to be able to get an occupancy permit, there's nothing we can do about it. We just have to approve it. I, I'm glad that it doesn't have to do with online issues. So, so we're not, there's not a security risk there. And.
I support asking for financial contribution if, if somebody.
And, yeah, and, and that's right. And, and there's no doubt we should ask them for a financial contribution. It's their requirement and um, theoretically, they're looking for ways to support us.
Okay, so. Staff will do this.
Uh, staff and I would suggest maybe a, a representative of the liaisons.
I, I think a representative of the liaisons and we have one on board right now.
Right.
Two. But who's the main one? Who's the liaison? Who's the alternate?
I, absolutely. No problem. We'll, we'll, we'll manage it.
We'll manage it. Okay. All right. Um.
I remember before we get off this, the civic center or town center, are we done with that? I, I'm just curious about timing. George has moved a little since our last meeting. Can you?
Uh, our, our temporary move-in date has moved, uh, from, it was originally the end of July. It's now the first, uh, I'm sorry, it's now mid-August uh, for the temporary, uh, move-in of staff. Um, the final sign-off of the building was originally October thirtieth. And now that's pushed out probably to mid-November, but that date has not formally changed. So I'm, I'm hesitant to say that the date has moved because the contractual date for completion still remains October thirtieth and that's the contractor's obligation. Beyond that date, there could be penalties involved, uh, but there are things in the works that are going to push it into mid-November.
Okay.
When are we going to have our ribbon cutting in our big party?
I think we should start planning for that, uh, and, uh, that's probably going to be right before Thanksgiving.
Okay. My birthday.
Good timing.
Okay. Diana? Now you're muted. Diana, you're muted.
Sorry about that. We were supposed, uh, earlier on, we were supposed to talk about whether we were going to continue having meetings at this time slot and it didn't get brought up. So I wanted to see, did, was that intentional?
I don't think it was on the agenda.
It was part of the, the COVID, uh, conversation. And, uh, the council directed that as long as we're in the Zoom meetings, we start them at six, but once we return to in-person, we would reconsider that and shifting it back to seven.
So we're going to still do that through September?
But, but right now we're at six PM.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So I think that, um, we, we need a, uh, an ad hoc subcommittee to plan the ribbon cutting. So I, I will, um, enlist, uh, uh, I'd like to enlist myself and Diana, if you would, serve with me. Okay? Thank you. Okay. And other than that, is there, I'm going to say, any other business council reports? There is a, uh, Council of Cities, um, Milbrae is hosting on Friday. And Schneider, who's the mayor, uh, is the one to connect with if you want to, uh, be part of the Council of Cities. And, uh, for some reason, they're just not sending out the, um, notices and the invitations, uh, like they used to. So, but that's information for you if you want to, uh, spend your Friday night.
Is it a Zoom or an in-person?
It would be, I think it's, uh, Zoom. I, I don't think, I don't think anybody's doing in-person things. Okay, other than that, call for an adjournment.
So, so moved.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, guys. Nice meeting. It was good. Bye, Anthony. Bye, Mona. Good job, Mona. She's gone. Bye, John and Walt.